I'd like to call to order the meeting of the Johnson County Community College Board of Trustees for June 2017. Please help me open the meeting by pledging allegiance to our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The next item of business is roll call and recognition of visitors. Ms. Slush?
This evening's visitors include John and Camille Roberts, Gordy Waldman, Paul Snyder, Michael Schott, and Roberta Eva Slage.
Thank you for joining us. The next item on the agenda is the open forum. The open forum section is an opportunity for members of the public to address the board. There will be one open forum period during each regularly scheduled board meeting. Speakers are limited to five minutes unless there are a large number, in which case the chair has the discretion to limit them to three minutes. In order to be recognized, individuals must sign in outside the door before the meeting prior to the open forum agenda item. When addressing the board, registered speakers are expected to remain at the podium, should be respectful, and are encouraged to direct any individual personnel or student matters directly to the appropriate college personnel. As a matter of practice, the board does not respond to comments in this setting, especially when those are personnel or student issues that are being addressed through our established grievance processes or otherwise the subject of review by the college or the board. We have no person signed up this evening for the open forum period. Then we'll move on to awards and recognitions. Dr. Sopjic.
Thanks, Trustee Musol. I'd like to turn this over to Karen Martley, our VP of Continuing Education and Staff Development. Karen?
Thank you, Joe. Our first award tonight, I'd like to recognize, if Catherine and Beth, if you would please come forward, I'd like to recognize our NiSOT Award winners for JCCC this past year. And the NiSOT Award is given through the National Institute for Staff and Organizational Development, and they recognize faculty members, administrators, and staff who demonstrate excellence in the importance of teaching and leadership specifically by keeping their focus on helping students succeed. We recognize up to two winners each year, and they receive funding to attend the conference in Austin, which was this past May. And at that conference, they do an Excellence Awards Dinner in celebration where they each receive medallions and certificates. This year's award winners, I want to introduce you both. This is Beth Chun, I always say her like Chun, excuse me, and she is our instructor in adult education and literacy, and Catherine Bells, who's a faculty member in our Humanities Department. Before I give them their awards, I want to just say we hear things on their application like taking times with students, helping them plan their goals, look to the future, really taking what, giving them the necessary things that they need, which often requires collaboration across campus or outside in the community as well. So, again, congratulations to both of you. We appreciate all that you do. Is that yours?
That's awesome.
I just want to say that I attended the conference and it was fabulous, and thank you very much for letting me have that opportunity. But the really cool thing is, I went to learn and get all kinds of new ideas, and I did, but guess what? I also gave so many ideas because this college is so awesome. We are at the top of the game. So I'd go to a conference, like for instance, Service Learning, and they're all talking about this, and I said, "Well, here's our website, and here's what we do," and they're going, "Wow." So across the board, Johnson County Community College is the tops.
That's great.
I will say one thing, and that is, one of the reasons that this college is so tremendous is the support, the leadership. And we have just tremendous leadership in our department under Janice and her colleagues, and I'm very grateful for their mentoring and their support, and also for that Judy Gordon who nominated, and without that, how would we ever be here? So, thank you very much for this honor. We appreciate it.
I'd like to introduce Alisa Waldman, if you'd come forward. Alisa is our Regional Director of the JCCC Small Business Development Center, and she'll give the next award.
Good evening. So, these faces may look familiar, because if you recall, about a year ago, the SBDC introduced you to our first exporter of the year within the Kansas Small Business Development Center, and that business is Custom Storefronts owned by John and Camille Roberts. John and Camille have continued on their path as exporters. They ship storefront components that are designed and manufactured in Olathe to over seventeen countries. This year, we nominated Custom Storefronts for yet another honor, the SBA exporter of the year. So the Kansas City District of the Small Business Administration covers an eighty-nine county economy, serving more than three hundred and twenty-five thousand businesses, and we were not at all surprised when Custom Storefronts was named the Kansas City SBA District exporter of the year. John and Camille employ about fifty people. The business has grown from their basement and a storage shed to two sizable warehouses in Olathe. They are wonderful ambassadors of the college, the Small Business Development Center, and their community. By the way, Camille is also a graduate of the Culinary Program, and John recently completed the Leadership Olathe Program, so they are very, very busy givers in addition to leading their successful business. And in your materials tonight, we have included an article from Thinking Bigger Business Magazine that extols Custom Storefronts as the export leader in our region, and we are delighted to celebrate their accomplishments with you tonight.
The SBA award came as a surprise to both Camille and I, and also all the employees of Custom Storefronts. But what, if you go back and you look at their press release, they've specifically stated that one of the deciding factors was the SBDC award that we got the year before, last year in 2016. So we can't be more thankful for the SBDC and what they've done. Alisa, Michelle, Jack, Ellen, and others, I'm sure I've, Karen, excuse me, didn't mean to exclude you as well. So we can't be more thankful for what they've done for us, not only to help us from a business standpoint and the website development that John, he's not here tonight, that he did for us, but to give us this opportunity and this exposure has been incredible. We want to thank you very much, and we appreciate the opportunity. Thank you. Thank you.
Next year, United States exporter of the year. I don't know if there's a world exporter of the year or not, but we'll get there. Thank you. This is probably an opportunity for anybody watching, if you own a small business and you want to make it better, the Small Business Development Center here is the place you should contact, four six nine eight five hundred, and ask for the Small Business Development Center. Is that right? Does that work? We need to get Alisa busy. She's got enough to do. All right. Great example of the work that is done here at the college to help our small businesses, our workforce, and the economy in Johnson County.
Alisa, how many clients do you have in the SBDC?
Approximately five hundred per year.
About five hundred clients per year through the Small Business Development Center. So, all right, thank you very much. The next item on the agenda is our college lobbyist report. Mr. Carter's not here today. You received in the mail, by email, earlier today or yesterday, his report, a brief report on the wrap-up of the session. He will give us a more detailed report next month. Does anybody have any questions or comments on his report, which focused on the tax package and really on K-12 funding, as well as, I guess, the fact that although there was some legislation with respect to concealed weapons passed, it did not exempt college campuses? Trustee Sharp?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would mention that within the last hour, the governor signed the school finance bill into law, so it will now be sent to the Kansas Supreme Court for consideration and implementation by June thirtieth, so we'll see how that goes. And then, I'm just trying to pull up Twitter, maybe somebody can say otherwise, but as of five o'clock, the gun bill for mental hospitals, KU hospital system, would have become law as of five o'clock without the governor's signature.
Anybody else? We'll have opportunity to hear from Dick and ask him questions next month. The next item on the agenda is the Audit Committee Minutes from our May eleventh meeting, which are in pages one and two of your packet. The Audit Committee met on May eleventh. I reported on this last month, so all you're looking at is the minutes for this month. If anybody has any questions about those, I'd be happy to try to answer them, but we did report on the Audit Committee at last month's meeting. Thank you. If not, we'll move on to Collegial Steering, which is a joint faculty, administration, and board committee. We did not meet in June because we don't meet during the June, July, and August months, so we're ready for Human Resources. Trustee Ingram?
Yes, the Human Resources Committee met on Monday, June fifth. Mr. Zimmerman reported on tuition assistance programs. As part of an internal audit, the Johnson County Community College Tuition Assistance Programs were reviewed. In general, the programs appear to be properly structured. However, based on the review, changes were recommended in the administration of colleges' plan for Johnson County Community College credit courses to ensure proper tax reporting and general benefit statement language changes to properly reflect Internal Revenue Code provisions. Specific changes to the JCCC tuition assistance programs are summarized as follows. Credit course administration should change from reimbursement to tuition reduction. JCCC courses taken at college request and non-credit courses description should reference the correct Internal Revenue Code provisions. Tuition assistance forms submitted by employees should be amended to reflect that the employee understands that they are responsible for ensuring compliance with and certifying dependence requirements as provided under the applicable IRC provisions. Effective fall 2017, Johnson County Community College credit courses will no longer require that tuition be paid upfront, but rather tuition will be waived if the employee meets the applicable eligibility requirements. Part-time regular employees and their eligible dependents will be eligible to take up to three credit hours each semester at no cost. There was also a staff development update, and Ms. Martley reported that staff development updates is working on a number of projects for the next fiscal year around the employee engagement results. Staff development is collaborating with EdTech to determine the design of a common site for the employee training. The goal is to improve the process for employees to access internal training resources. The awards and recognition site is also being updated. A pilot program is being developed that identifies training resources for hourly staff. A survey has been sent to Campus Connection employees to identify training needs. This group will work with staff development during the development and implementation of the pilot program. The next new full-time faculty orientation is scheduled for August seventh through the eleventh. There will be three facilitators working with the group this year due to the size of the group. They are updating the outline of the year-long program based on the evaluation feedback and feedback from the deans. In addition to the orientation, the new faculty development coordinator is reviewing best practices for mentoring new faculty and meeting with the deans to gather feedback. This information will be used to update the program. All new full-time faculty are assigned a mentor during the first year of employment, so this is an important process of the, an important part of the onboarding process. A master faculty retreat is being planned for January 2018. Staff development is collaborating with faculty to plan the retreat. The details will be finalized during August professional development days, and that concludes my report.
Thank you. Questions regarding Human Resources? If not, thank you, Trustee Ingram and Trustee Cross for learning quality.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. The Learning Quality Committee met earlier this month in this room. Trustee Sandate and I were present on June fifth here, along with Dr. McLeod and a variety of other people. That report can be found at page five of your board packet and the following pages. We had sabbatical presentations from a number of people, including Eve Blobom, an associate professor of sociology who was granted a sabbatical for the fall 2015 semester to make significant progress towards the completion of her dissertation research, which examines the effects of decades-long population decline on rural communities, the way community members understand and cope with such macro social changes, and how these shifts challenge our very notion of community. She explored the central issue of determining what community identity stands for today and some of the benefits of living in small towns versus a big city, as well as the recent decline in smaller communities. Dr. McLeod also presented a number of updates of policies and academic programs that you can find at page six and in the following pages. We do have a few recommendations, Mr. Chair, to report to the board. It is the recommendation of the Learning Quality Committee that the Board of Trustees approved the 2017 and 18 Learning Quality Committee Working Agenda as it is shown subsequently in the board packet, and I would make that motion.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the working agenda for the Learning Quality Committee. Are there any questions or any discussion? Not all in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Oppose no. Motion carries unanimously.
Mr. Chair, the Faculty Association and the administration also recommend that the Board of Trustees approve the 2019-2020 academic calendar as shown subsequently in the board packet. Some of the dates may be revisited due to contract negotiations, area, school district schedule adjustments, and other curricular changes, but I would make a motion to adopt the 2019-20 academic calendar.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the proposed academic calendar for school year 2019, or 2018-2019, I'm sorry, 2019-2020. Any questions or discussion? Not all in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Oppose no. Motion carries unanimously.
Mr. Chair, I believe we have one final recommendation. It is the recommendation of the college administration. We just voted on that, excuse me. So, Mr. Chair, while pointing everyone's attention to the pages five through, looks like eleven, twelve, for the learning quality report, that would conclude my report.
Okay. Thank you. Trustee Cook, would you be ready for the management committee?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We did meet. I'm sorry?
You have a heavy lift tonight, lots of items.
Yes, we did. We did meet at 8:00 AM on Wednesday, June seventh, here in the boardroom. Trustees Lindstrom and Cross were present, along with several management team members. That whole report can be found on pages thirteen to forty-three of your packet. Before we get to the recommendations, I would just give you a few updates. Barbara Larson, Executive Vice President of Finance and Administration Services, provided discussion and information about our partnership with the Overland Park Fire Department. We use their facility for training, and that agreement can be found in the consent agenda on pages sixty-three and sixty-four. Rachel Leers, Associate Vice President of Finance, said that the Board of Trustees approved the college's management budget at their meeting in May, as you'll recall, and reported that that budget has subsequently been loaded into the system so we can begin to procure items for the next academic year. And the reason we do that in May again is so that we can allow that, those transactions to begin, so we have necessary supplies in August and materials to start the school year. Mitch Borchers, Associate Vice President of Business Services, presented the sole service report. That is found on page twenty-seven, and again, for the public, that is for items that are between, awarded bids between $25,000 and $100,000. Rex Hayes, Associate Vice President of Campus Services and Facility Planning, presented the capital infrastructure inventory and replacement plan. He also gave the monthly update on capital infrastructure projects, and that report is found on page thirty-eight. And we're pleased to announce that one of the items that had been on that report month for month, the famous window at the Nerman Museum, contemporary art, has been now properly installed, and Mr. Hayes won a terrific prize to get that off the list. Our first recommendation has to do with the official newspaper designation. Chris Gray, Executive Director of Marketing, stated that Kansas statute requires that when a school district or community college publishes a legal notice in the newspaper, that needs to be a weekly newspaper and published at least fifty times. We've had, fifty times during the year, we've had discussion in the past about whether the state statute would change to allow electronic. That has not yet occurred, and so it is the recommendation of the management committee that the Board of Trustees accepts the recommendation of the college administration to designate the legal record, the Shawnee Dispatch and Tri-County News, as official newspapers of the college, and that publication constitutes legal notice on behalf of the Board of Trustees, and I'll make that motion.
Second.
Moved and seconded to identify and designate the three newspapers as official newspapers for publication. Any questions or discussion? Not all in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Oppose no. Motion carries unanimously.
Next item deals with sponsorships, and again, our college is approached on several occasions to sponsor various events. It's not an easy task to get the list down to a manageable list, because every request really has probably good intent and good purpose, and you can see on page fourteen of the packet, the sponsorships. Again, Mr. Gray with committee has gone through those in detail, and it is the recommendation of the management committee that the board accepts the recommendation of the college administration to approve the twelve listed sponsorships for the 2017-2018 fiscal year at a cost of $16,500 plus an additional $2,000 for contingency, for a total cost of $18,500, and I'll make that motion.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt the list of sponsors for next year with a $2,000 contingent fee, contingent fund.
I would say, Mr. Chair, that a lot of the criteria that goes for that is, how does that properly place the position of the college in the community with related services and partnerships? So, we're going through it rather quickly tonight, but Mr. Gray and his team really spend a lot of time to ensure that the college is properly positioned in these sponsorships.
Thank you. Further discussion? Not all in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Oppose no. Motion carries unanimously.
Next, Rachel Leers said that on April twenty-first, the Student Sustainability Committee voted to transfer $8,000 from the Sustainability Initiatives Fund to the Adult Supplementary Education Fund to support the purchase of an electric vehicle for use in the driver's education program. So it is the recommendation of the management committee that the Board of Trustees authorized the transfer of $8,000 from the Sustainability Initiatives Fund to the Adult Supplementary Education Fund, and I'll make that motion.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
And I would say, Mr. Chair, that this is, and I really apologize for not having the amount that's accumulated over time from the Student Sustainability Fund, but the students have been very, very generous and very sensitive to the sustainability throughout the campus, and as the trend for electric cars continues to grow and in align with our sustainability initiatives, I just really think it's important for the trustees to applaud and congratulate the students for their efforts to continue to contribute funds. Is a couple of hundred thousand dollars, is that where, and I shouldn't even mention it, but it's a pretty large number that they've given over time.
Well, that's right, and I'm just thinking of last year when we did the Carlson Center refurbishment, they contributed $75,000 just for those, for the reupholstery of the seats. So that alone, so yes, I think several hundred thousand dollars is certainly possible.
Anyway, we're really appreciative and thank the students for this effort.
Agreed. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Oppose no. Motion carries unanimously.
Next, two recommendations have to do with the college's bond counsel and financial advisor. These are reappointments of Gilmore and Bell to serve as bond counsel to the college, and Piper Jaffray to serve as financial advisor. It should be noted that fees for serving as bond counsel and financial advisor are payable only upon the closing of financings. It is the recommendation of the management committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve the retention of Gilmore and Bell as bond counsel for fiscal year 2017-2018, and I'll make that motion.
Second.
Moved and seconded to retain Gilmore and Bell as bond counsel. Any discussion? Not all in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Oppose no.
It is the recommendation of the management committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve the retention of Piper Jaffray as financial advisor for same-year fiscal year 2017-2018, and I'll make that motion.
Second.
Moved and seconded to retain Piper Jaffray as financial advisor for the coming school year.
I would say, Mr. Chair, that both of these are, have been long-going partners in with our new financial, our facilities master plan and our intended purchases. It's just, we discussed in the management committee the strength of continuing with ongoing counsel in both cases, and so it's not something, again, that we just took lightly, but they have been very valuable in the college up to this point and going forward.
Further discussion? Not all in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Oppose no. Motion carries unanimously.
As you look back, our next item is the Facilities Improvements Project, and we've had several discussions. You will remember that at our last meeting, bound counsel talked about the funding for our financial, for our facilities plan, and you'll remember that the financing includes a combination of college reserves, capital campaign, and proceeds of a lease agreement. Presentation was made last month, and each of you received the copy from Piper Jaffray on that, on those details of those plans. The design phase for the projects prioritized as package, one of the facilities master plan has begun. A timeline has been developed for the planned issuance of $50 million in Series 2017 Certificates of Participation, which includes a potential sale of bonds in September, again, an item that we discussed last month, with the closing date to be in early October. Groundbreaking for the two new facilities, a career in tech education building and arts and design building is planned for January of 2018. The next step in the planned financing is the board adoption of resolutions, which are found on page twenty-one and twenty-six of your board packet, and I would offer the first. It is the recommendation of the management committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to adopt a resolution authorizing the intent to execute and deliver a lease purchase agreement, and I'll make that motion.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to authorize a lease purchase agreement, which is part of the bond process for our facilities master plan. Is there any discussion?
And again, Mr. Henderson really went over that in quite detail last month, but if there are any questions about that, I'm sure we can respond to it.
If not, all in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Oppose no. Motion carries unanimously.
It is the recommendation of the management committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to adopt a resolution authorizing the offering for sale of certificates of participation in the approximate principal amounts of $50 million, and I'll make that motion.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to authorize the sale of certificates of participation in the approximate principal amount of $50 million. Is there any discussion?
Again, just to kind of review that overall package, we're looking at $50 million in certificates of participation, which will be made available to the public, $20 million from our operating fund, and $15 million of the Capital Projects Fund with that initial phase of about $85 million project. Again, the details and the amount of which we've had several discussions upon. We're just at the time to approve those resolutions and move forward.
I think it's important to note, we also include in that funding source a private capital campaign.
$15 million.
Fifteen million. You may have mentioned that, so. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Oppose no. Motion carries unanimously.
We have a number of requests for proposals to review. The first is for renewal of the annual contract for beverages. The recommendation of the management committee is that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve the renewal of the annual contract for beverages with Pepsi Beverage Company at an annual expenditure not to exceed $230,000, and I'll make that motion.
Second.
Moved and seconded to renew the annual contract for beverages on campus with Pepsi at an annual expenditure not to exceed $230,000. Is there any discussion?
Should we make the annual comment about Coca-Cola?
Yes. In the honor of trustee, former trustee Stewart, who would object to this because he prefers Coca-Cola products. So, we've continued that for at least the six years I've been on the board.
Can I just ask, and I didn't think to ask in committee, Mr. Chair and Chair, Trustee Cook, we go into a contract in order to get better purchasing power, is that right, from a certain distributor?
Yes, that's, I think, a part of it, and the other part, I think, is if there's any, any contribution back from the company at a certain point, a breakpoint.
In the form of a rebate, something along those lines.
Very good. Trustee Lindstrom?
It's important to note, this was the low bid.
That's correct.
Okay. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Oppose no. Motion carries unanimously. Need a break, Dr. Cook?
No.
He walked across the handles.
We had, the next item has to do with the college's learning management system, and we really had a lot of detailed discussion about this project. Over the last five years, we've had different management systems, but this is really important, I believe, in terms of how we can help assist students in efficiencies, and the whole idea of courses and grades and uniformity among our faculty. And it didn't go without a lot of effort, and I've asked Dr. McLeod to give a little recap of that process, because I think it's important for the trustees to understand that how we deliver and manage our data with grades and so on is a topic of interest by a number of faculty. a number of faculty and users, but I believe that what we're trying to do is, how can we make this efficient for our users, the students, as best as possible? So, Dr. McLeod, if you will, tell us a little bit about what happened.
Our learning management system currently is the way in which we deploy both our online courses as well as facilitate online electronic connections for our live in-person classes. So, we are posting lectures, we're posting film clips, we're turning in assignments, grading within that forum, giving feedback to students directly electronically so that there's a seamless transition, and also allowing us to store past work records and the ability to revisit those should students have questions. Currently, we are on what has been our fourth learning management system since the dawn of the 2000s. We continue to enter into longer contracts in the hope that we will sustain a single system so that faculty and staff and students can get used to those. Unfortunately, the history of our systems has been that they have been snuffed out by being bought out by larger learning systems. Starting in 2000, we signed a ten-year contract with WebCT. We were one of the first schools to get onboard with online platforming for students. That company was bought out in 2005 halfway through our contract by Blackboard, so we were serviced by Blackboard through 2008. We had poor experience with them, and then in 2008, we signed a contract for a multitude of years that was supposed to go through 2014 with Angel, subsequently bought out by Blackboard in 2009. So, we were back with Blackboard until 2013, at which point we went with Desire to Learn, who is our current vendor. That contract will end officially in 2018, so we went back out after Desire to Learn determined that they did not wish to host on our premises anymore. They wanted us to move into the cloud, and because of our public nature, if we were going to change that contract, it required us to really look seriously at going back up for another RFP. And in that, we have found a better solution that we have determined in moving to Instructure Canvas. That process was over the course of about three and a half months. It involved faculty from every one of the units on campus. There were fourteen represented entities, as the faculty were broken up by departmental unit, who were part of that group. We received bids and then opened sandbox platforms from everyone who bid with us. So, the faculty across campus, not just those who served on the committee, had an opportunity to go out, use these platforms, build dummy classes. We invited students from our student government to come in and play with the courses that we had built in the multiple platforms and provided them with feedback opportunities. So, we gathered student feedback as well. And then after all of that, we brought in Tom Pagano's folks and actually had an individual session with each company about viability, connectivity to Banner and our other platforms. One of the big issues with our latest implementation was that we were promised that instructors would be able to do all of their grades in the electronic gradebook and push those directly into the transcripting system in Banner so that we didn't have to re-enter grades and have an opportunity for mistakes where students would be misgraded or have the wrong grades input. That process did not work properly until just this past year. We finally got it up and working. It was promised to work upon entering into our last contract, and it has not worked since 2013 up until just recently. And so, all of these pieces worked better. There was a question in management committee about the vote. The vote between departments actually broke down along the lines of one of my favorite movies. It was nine to five in favor of Instructure Canvas, and there were also a series of background votes where we looked into individual grading of functions within each, and Canvas still won when you went all the way down to button clicks, availability of functions and tools. It still won out over all of the competition. So, what we're going for right now is, in fact, the best, most cutting-edge technology on the market, and currently, it's also growing in market share in that most of the major institutions of learning under the regents in this state are all moving to Kansas with the exception of KCK and University of Kansas, which both are under Blackboard, which we've had a storied history with and determined did not fit our needs.
As you could, thank you, Dr. McLeod. As you can see on page thirty of your board packet, we did have five bidders for this project, and infrastructure was not the low bid. However, over time, there were, as I recall, Dr. McLeod, we're looking at like a five-year plan here, and they were cheaper in some years than others, but more startup costs. But I wanted Dr. McLeod to explain that because I think the management committee feels that the issue was well-vetted in committee, and while there were some differences, I think the key was the committee came to a common resolve on this item. And the management committees, at least my opinion, this is a significant step, again, to help deliver efficiency to our students, and I believe that this is a good choice. So, with that being said, it is the recommendation of the management committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve the proposal from Infrastructure Inc. for the establishment of an annual contract for a learning management system with an initial year total expenditure not to exceed ninety-one thousand one sixty-five fifty, and I'll make that motion.
Second. Moved and seconded. Is there any discussion or additional questions? I appreciate the explanation because, number one, it's the high bidder. Number two, we've had issues with our learning management system in the past, and I know there really aren't any guarantees when it comes to technology, but it sounds like this has been vetted with faculty, staff, and students. I assume the dummy classes, what grade did the trustees get in those classes? Were there grades assigned or?
We wiped those slates clean in the interest of public scrutiny.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I also think it's important to note, and Dr. McLeod, you might want to comment on this. I asked the question about the review committee, where they were on their deliberation, and Dr. McLeod made a point that I thought was very important, and he said, "Let me worry about the economics of this. What I want from the review committee is, what's the best product for the college?" And I don't know if you want to...
That was a significant concern for folks. When we looked at the financials of this, it was a question of, we're not going with the low bid. We are taking something that is going to cost more. One of the, one of the great pieces of Desire to Learn was that it was already something that we owned, and so, the cost was moving off-prem into the cloud, which saved us several hundred thousand dollars because of implementation costs and moving things across to new platforms. But in my mind, the question really was not our cost, it was, what will be the cost if we provided students with a poorer alternative? So, I wanted them to choose the best possible LMS for our students and going forward for the entire college, and assured them that I would fight for that and look at what were efficiencies in terms of cost or other issues that we needed to deal with on the backend. What I needed from them was their expertise on what can we use, what can our students use, and what's going to provide the most utility.
Might be helpful for those watching that the difference between the Instructure bid, which was the high bid, and the D2L Desire to Learn bid is about eighty-two thousand, eighty-eight thousand dollars?
Yes.
Over a five-year process is less than twenty thousand dollars a year, and I think from the little bit I've heard from faculty and administrators about how it functioned, that if we can eliminate that, it will be definitely worth twenty thousand dollars a year.
Yeah, being able to actually have the mobile app work for students, which we were promised would work in 2013 when they came onboard and has yet to actually function properly, would be worth the money.
All in favor say yes?
Yes.
Those no, motion carries unanimously.
I think, Mr. Chair, just to clarify that, eighty thousand dollars you're talking about, the low bid was actually half that, but there was, you know, it was just way, wasn't even in the ballpark. But the next closest one was only four thousand dollars difference, so, I don't want the public to think that it was...
And that was Blackboard.
That's correct.
Yes. We had two, the second and third low bidders, the second, third bidders under Instructure were one, both of ones we had bad experiences with.
Yes, they were.
Yeah.
Our next item is an RFP for Architectural Engineering Services for the Student Center Library. The detail of that is found on page thirty-two of your board packet. You will note that sixty-four firms were notified. We received bids from eight firms, and we are recommending the low bidder for this process for architectural services, like I say, for Student Center Library and Athletic Facilities renovations, which are on Phase Two of our Master Facilities Plan. Therefore, it is the recommendation of the management committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve the proposal from PGA V Architects Inc. for Architectural and Engineering Services for the Student Center Library and Athletic Facilities renovations at the rate of six-point-two-four percent of the actual project guaranteed maximum price, GMP construction cost, with the final agreement subject to separate board approval of bond issuance and the receipt of sufficient bond revenue to fund this project, as well as review by college council, and I'll make that motion.
Second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor of the motion to select PGA V Architects for these purposes, please say yes?
Yes.
Those no, motion carries unanimously.
Align with that is the RFP for Construction Manager at Risk Services for Student Center Library and Athletic Facilities recommendations, and that detail is found on page thirty-four. Fifty-eight firms were notified, six bid, and this is not the low bid, but we'll talk a little bit about that. It is the recommendation of the management committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve the proposal from JE Dunn Construction for Construction Manager at Risk Services for the Student Center Library and Athletic Facilities renovations to include pre-construction services in the amount of thirty-five thousand dollars and construction management services at the rate of two-point-one percent, and general conditions costs at the rate of four-point-three-five percent of the actual project guaranteed maximum price, GMP construction cost, with the final agreement subject to separate board approval of bond issuance and receipt of sufficient bond revenue to fund this project, as well as review by college council, and I'll make that motion.
Second. Been moved and seconded to accept JE Dunn Construction for Construction Manager at Risk purposes. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, and I don't recall, Barbara, what the variance was, but we, again, had a long committee evaluation of all of these firms.
They were very close. I believe over, for a construction project that's roughly twenty-two million dollars, the difference was less than forty-five thousand dollars, correct, in total in terms of construction management fees, and it really came down to experience with similar projects.
And this is a construction company that's, we've worked with before in the past, and we have a good partnership with, so, we'd make that...
Trustee Lindstrom.
On the JE Dunn, which was awarded, the fees for their company were less, by the way. They were lower on the fees.
For the prior, for the prior bid, correct.
All in favor, did we vote on JE Dunn?
We hadn't voted yet.
All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Those no, motion passes unanimously.
I think we're down to the final RFP, which was for a digital color press. The detail of that is found on page thirty-six of your board packet. Thirty-six forms were notified. We had four that responded, and we are recommending the low bidder. It is the recommendation of the college administration that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve the lowest acceptable proposal in an amount not to exceed two-hundred-and-sixty-one thousand five-hundred-and-eighty-eight dollars from Xerox Corporation for the purchase of color, of a colored digital press and associated service costs for one year, and I'll make that motion.
Second. Moving seconded to adopt the proposal from Xerox Corporation. Is there any discussion? Not all in favor say yes?
Yes.
Those no, motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I believe that concludes our report.
Thank you, Dr. Cook, and thank you to members of the management committee. That is a heavy agenda. I assume your meeting was robust.
They always are. Thank you.
We want the Treasurers' Report. Trustee Cross.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. The board packet contains the Treasurers' Report for the month ended April thirtieth, 2017. Some items of note include, page one of the Treasurers' Report is the General Post-Secondary Technical Education Fund summary. As of April thirtieth, eighty-three percent of the college's fiscal year had expired, and the college's unencumbered cash balance as of April thirtieth, 2017, in all funds was eighty-nine point nine million. Expenditures in the primary operating funds are within the approved budgetary limits, and it is therefore the recommendation of the college administration, Mr. Chair, that the Board of Trustees approve the Treasurers' Report for the month ended April thirtieth, 2017, subject to audit.
Second. Been moved and seconded to accept the Treasurers' Report, subject to audit. Are there any questions?
If I may comment just briefly, Mr. Chair, I just would like to commend the college and this board for re-establishing, I think, our reserves over the last several years. I think the foresight of previous boards to build up both reserve fund and a capital reserve fund shows the foresight necessary to weather economic downturns and poorer decisions made by others in state government. So, I believe we are adequately on pace to rebuild our reserves, and I just wanted to comment and congratulate this board. That concludes my report.
Next item on the agenda is the Advisory Committee Report.
I don't think we voted... We didn't vote on the Treasury.
And I'm losing it. All in favor say yes?
Yes.
Those no, the Treasury Report is adopted unanimously. I wanted to get to the Advisory Committee Report.
I could tell. Thank you, Trustee Musel. On page fifty-five in the board packet, there is a recommendation regarding our advisory committees. You have a copy of Supplement B here, which is significant as it shows we have a good number of advisory committees, but most importantly, page after page of volunteers who serve on those advisory committees. And their role is invaluable as they contribute to the relevancy and the quality of what goes on in the classroom, and they're very, they're very, very essential for how we operate here at the college. So, I'd like to read the recommendation to you. It is the recommendation of the college administration that the Board of Trustees approve the advisory committees contained in Supplement B from July one, 2017 through June thirtieth, 2018.
Do you hear a motion?
I would move.
I'm sorry. Trustee Lindstrom moves.
Second.
Sharp can second. Any discussions or questions of President Sopchik? Not all in favor say yes?
Yes.
Those no, advisory committees are approved unanimously. Monthly report to the board.
Thank you, Trustee Chair Musel. You've seen the monthly report to the board. This reflects a lot of great things that are happening here on campus and also kind of reveals the people who are doing those great things, as every one of these projects has somebody behind it, and that is so critical for this college. And there's so much activity going on, and there's a tremendous level of accomplishment and excellence in this report, so I hope you have a chance to read it. One thing, another, I guess you could say, event of excellence is something that recently occurred, as our faculty-staff team won first place again this year in the dragon boat competition on Brush Creek, on Brush Creek. It's a real dynasty. I think we are winning this like every year. We won five races, and I'd like to recognize the team members on that. Jeff Anderson, Jared Anderson, Casey Buchanan, Melanie Harvey, Lynn Beatty, Darlene Hatcher, Brian Wright, Shi Long Xia, Mark Cowardon, Valerie Dorsey, and Sheila Philip. Congratulations. It's outstanding. Thank you.
I don't know why that's not in awards and recognitions, but it should have been at the start of the agenda, right, Dennis?
Maybe we should do a video. We should have a video of the performance on the, on Brush Creek.
Almost Notre Dame-like.
Let's have, we're going to do a lightning round, and so, to get it started, I'd like to ask Dr. McLeod, you're first.
Well, to start, we've got a lot of exciting things that have happened in academics this year, not the least of which will take full hold on July first, when our reorganization is finally complete over on the academic side of things, and our departments have been realigned in such a way that the firefighters will actually be in the same department with the nurses and the police officers as opposed to with the philosophers, no offense to Dennis, but whether the fire is hot is a question that I don't know. We want to train them to work on, and so, we've worked really hard and diligently at making certain that we've aligned our faculty in such a way that folks with programs who could benefit from some cross-pollinization will actually be within the same departments. So, that is a huge win and something I think that we probably needed to work... So, that is a huge win, and something I think that we probably needed to work on before, but I'm glad I got to be here to be a part of it, because they started it before I got here and just had never kind of moved it across the finish line. Second, we've done some significant thinking about our approach to our classrooms, and with Barbara's help and folks in finance, we've really started to move forward. We will be completing renovation of six classrooms this summer to bring them into the modern age and create active collaborative learning classrooms with appropriate technology and space requirements designed to allow students flexibility of space. And third, we've finally brought something to a close, which will gratify me a great deal, and after a year of kind of manning the oars on both sides of the ship by myself, we have successfully hired the new AVP, Dr. Gurbeshan Singh, who joins us from MCC Longview. I have gone back to my old stomping grounds and raided for the best that I could take, and so we will now be able to start moving forward with the extra hands to get our curriculum kind of in line, and start to spend this next year in looking at our degree structure and the degrees that we offer. One final thing, though, that I would like to say is, though I will embarrass her greatly, I would like to say that it is with a great deal of fear, trepidation, sadness, that this is the last meeting, at which I will look to my right and see my boss, Dr. Judy Corb, who was so enlightened enough as to actually hire me despite there probably being better alternatives. And I've only been able to work with her for a year, but I would say that as mentors go, she's one of the best that I've had, and that she's allowed me to grow, to learn, but also to not make horrible mistakes that will cause me great pain later. And so I move into the future, hopefully with her on my shoulder a little bit, but will absolutely positively miss her presence here.
Thank you, Dr. McCloud. Dr. Weber.
All right, I want to start my portion of the lightning round by first saying that I was trying to think about some things we could highlight in our area a little bit, and I realized what I wanted to do was just kind of encapsulate what's been going on at the institution over the past year, and.
What is your area, Dr. Weber?
That is a good question. I ask myself that every day.
People on the video.
And student success and engagement, so, and student success and engagement. And so what I did want to do, though, instead, is as an enrollment manager, I wanted to point out, because I don't know that we've given enough emphasis as an institution to, over the past year, our enrollment has inclined and increased, both in headcount and credit hours and different, excuse me, in different terms and in different ways. In our headcount in the fall semester increased by one and a half, just over one percent, and the spring semester by one point nine percent, and nationally, both in two years and in colleges and universities as a whole, there's actually been a decline, and so we've been bucking the trend, and one of the things that excites me the most is our outcomes, our degrees and certificates. Our degrees and certificates awarded went from thirty-four hundred last year and thirty-three to thirty-five hundred and eighty-one, so we increased our degrees and certificates by four point three percent this year. So, there are more students out there with qualified, recognized credentials, and I could say things like, well, that's due to some things we've done in success and engagement, like we've activated at local high schools our recruiters in a more meaningful way, and our counselors have been out and about doing some things. We've developed the success advocate strategies through pathways, but in all honesty, our increase in enrollment has been more so due to a college-wide commitment. When I thought about this, I looked back and said, you know, our business office has looked at policies and procedures and ways that we could remove barriers to student entry and success. We have a student enrollment team that looks and focuses on how do we, how do we create strategies for marketing and recruitment and IS, and so Chris and Tom's team worked with that really well. Instruction has made significant modified offerings to make sure that the courses we need for students are there. We develop a lot of our professional development around student success initiatives, and as a board, a significant measure and risk and leap of faith you guys took in us last year was to approve the metro rate, and the metro rate was one of the areas where we experienced a significant increase in enrollment over the past year. So, I liken it more to, or attribute it more to, a college-wide commitment to student access and success. So, thank you, guys, everybody, for their commitment to that. But I'm gonna follow up, too, and say I would be remiss if I didn't take the opportunity to say something about Judy. When I came to the college, I guess it's almost two and a half years ago, I came from previously serving as a Chief Student Affairs Officer for seven-plus years at a couple different institutions, and I'd always reported to a president in those roles, and so a couple people who knew me pretty well said, well, do you see this kind of as a regression, that, you know, you're not reporting to the president? And I had done my due diligence, and I had, I had recognized and learned how revered Judy is in staff and individual development, so I thought, well, I really probably could continue to grow as an individual and professionally, and I have to say that I am very thankful and appreciate the guidance and the support, and I would say my only regret is that it hasn't been longer, and for all the advice and support you gave me, I'm gonna leave you with a piece of advice that we heard from Ron Lemay at the KC ADC event where he gave the fellow retirees, and so I'm gonna give you a Gatorade and say, stay in the game.
Mr. Chair, while Karen's coming forward, I just wanted to say, Randy, I really appreciated the Success Center report that's on page three of the Student Success, Student Services and Success Report, and we talked a lot about wellness of students in the past year, and we've talked a lot at ACCT about student completion and degree completion, but we're also talking more about overall student wellness, and I was very pleased about the number of contacts that we've had with students in a variety of ways. I may want to talk with you in more detail about that, but I just wanted to thank you for that, and tracking that and bringing that to our attention. Thank you.
I started that first to be more out, rather than just waiting for anything, but I appreciate your listening.
Thank you.
Well, I want to give you an update on what's been happening in continuing education. This is our summer youth program time, so we're serving currently, as of today, around thirteen hundred youth have enrolled, which is about a twenty percent increase over last year, and three of our new programs, and I had a testimonial, Lisa's son who left, that was my customer in the room, but three of our classes that are really being well-received that are new. One is called Maker Labs, Make Your First Three-D Creation for grades six through nine, and we've been working with Zach in the EdTech Center, has been really helpful, and I wanted to acknowledge him publicly, for giving a tour and working with the students who have been building, doing modeling software to sculpt and render their own three-D creations there. And then another one that's been really popular is Paleo Rocks, and that's for grades six through nine, and we're partnering there on the museum at Prairie Fire. They come on site, they bring their instructors to teach the classes and partner with us, and as our students complete those courses, they're then eligible to do the overnight dig that they're doing in Kansas next weekend, actually, so they have a two-day event where they will go overnight. Great feedback on that. And then I also want to acknowledge the Sustainability Department again. They've partnered with us again, and Jay's not here, so y'all tell Jay that I mentioned him again, but I do appreciate so much how they've worked with us. We applied for a grant for Beekeeping 101 class for our youth program that grows nine through twelve, but we didn't have the beekeeping suits for youth, we only had them for adults. So, they have funded those suits for us, so we can have the students not only in the classroom, but take them out to the bee yard as well, to have that hands-on experience. And those are programs that are always full on the adult side, so now we're seeing it at the youth level as well. And I also, like Randy and Mickey, would, you know, just like to acknowledge you tonight, Judy, as well, I know. You're not here that long, so, yeah, but, you know, one of the things that I don't probably say enough, I was hired in nineteen ninety-three, and be twenty-four years this July, and one of the reasons I applied for the position at the college is I was working with BNI at the time, Business and Industry, with Judy and Dr. Phelan and Kathy Jaeger and Betty Anastasio, and we would contract at Sprint with vendors all over the country to do our training and development, and we contracted with your team to come in and work with us. And I remember just how professional and the high level of quality, but most important, we looked at service being a key factor, and service for you and your team was all about those genuine relationships and working with us and our staff and our employees. And I can remember going home and saying, you know, Tim, I really want to work for Johnson County. I really want to be a part of that team. So, when the position was open, and I got it, I was just thrilled beyond belief that I could be a part of this team here and work with you, Judy. And over those last twenty-four years, I know a lot's changed, but the one thing that's really been consistent is your commitment still to quality and professionalism and doing what's right for our students and our employees every single day, and I so admire that. You know, I tell my managers all the time that employee engagement is a lot about having that connection and that commitment with your leader, and I feel like I have that with you, as do many on campus, so I really appreciate that. And I also know that I tease you a lot about your sayings that you make in your presentations various places, but I will tell you that I'm going to keep those with me and try to model those behaviors like you do. So, I am committing to you that I'm going to remember that every day's an interview, I'm going to be nice, I'm going to see the other point of view, and I'm gonna talk less and listen more. You've been a great role model to me, and I think it's really shaped how I lead my staff, and I, we're going to miss you, but I am looking forward to watching your next journey, so congratulations.
Thanks, Karen.
Thank you, Mr.
Karen, what does a beekeeping suit cost?
Oh, my.
And you don't need to tell me now, if you let me know later. Yeah. Thank you.
For you?
That was wrong. That should have been filtered.
I'm gonna drop some bees off at your door.
Dr. Sopchik, save me.
I'll try. I want to close by also sharing some sentiments about Judy, because you probably have heard and through many, many of the, you know, celebrations we've had, some key themes that are consistent when people talk about what Judy does and has done for the organization. I mean, the word commitment comes up repeatedly, professionalism, compassion, wisdom, fairness, a great leader. Randy just talked about an outstanding mentor. I mean, clearly, over the past couple of years, there's been a great transition in leadership at the college, but believe me, there's a high level of security in the fact that Judy was a mentor to all of those who joined us, which facilitated a smooth transition, and I can tell you, that's priceless. Judy's departure is extraordinary, because everyone said, has said all these things, but there's something that kind of underscores it all, and that's a very powerful emotional goodbye, a sense of emotional loss, because people are passionate about working for Judy and also kind of exuberant about what she has done for them over the years. I know Judy's going to be going into a so-called retirement. I can say with utmost confidence, it's going to be one of the most active retirements anyone's ever had, as I presume clients and presentation and teaching opportunities are lining up every day, and that is a testament to what Judy brings to the party. I think it's quite a compliment. This college has certainly been fortunate to have had Judy work here for the years that she has. It's hard to find any person who's ever worked here who's made the contribution she has to make this place what it is today. So, Judy will be missed. She will be missed by everybody, and we all wish you the best of luck, and thank you. Thank you for what you've done for this college.
Thank you.
Would you like to make some comments, or would you like to hear some board comments on top of the ones you've already heard? You are the boss for the.
I'll just, I'll just make a couple of comments, because Joe told me that he was going to turn this to me at the end of Lightning Round, so I feel like I've given a lot of speeches and said a lot of goodbyes over the last few weeks, and you think about it, because life is full of firsts and lasts, and some are more significant than others, and certainly, I have been dreading my last board meeting.
You dreaded all your board meetings.
And of course, one of the things I will miss the most is Lightning Round, as I'm sure you will miss my elegant contributions to Lightning Round, but in lieu of tears, I would just like to thank all of you once again for the support that you have given to me and the opportunity that I've had to spend my career at Johnson County Community College. I'm honored to have had the opportunity to serve the students, the faculty, the staff, and even the board at this amazing college. So, I said it before, and I'll say it again, that even though I will be gone, a big part of my heart stays behind. Thank you.
I know there are some board members that would like to say something about your service, so anybody like to start? Dr. Trustee Lindstrom?
I just, quickly, I'll make a motion that Judy can't leave for another two years.
Second.
That'd be gratis, too. That'd be the greatest.
We deny that, really.
Dr. Cook.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I guess I would like to make my remarks about Judy as a challenge to all of us, and it was heard again tonight, and I believe it was very eloquently spoken at her retirement reception by guests from out of town. And the challenge I would have to all of us would be this: Are we a fan of something? If you're a fan of something, what is it you're a fan of, excluding your favorite athletic team, because we all are fans of our teams, particularly when they win? But the challenge would be, are you a raving fan of something? That would be a degree higher in terms of your emotion and your passion for that in which you believe, and it seems to me that as we think about Dr. Corb and what has been said so consistently, she's been a raving fan of this college in a variety of positions, and the reason she's a raving fan of this college, in my opinion, is because she's a raving fan of personal development, of human development. It was heard by every speaker tonight, in terms of what you have done for them in order for them to become a better human being. And if we believe in our mission of this college, to inspire learning, to transform lives, to strengthen communities, it seems to me, Judy Corb, that you've been a raving fan of people development all of your life, which has led for, hopefully, many of us to be raving fans of Johnson County Community College. Thank you.
Anybody else? I, Judy, I'm gonna miss your charts. You left out your chart. That was part of the Lightning Round, I think, but it was, they were wonderful, and I know Trustee Stewart was particularly fond of them. I'm gonna try not to look at you, because last time we did this and Andy Anderson retired, I couldn't do it hardly, so. I mean, across campus, I can't think of anybody that I know that has done as much as a student, as a graduate, as a faculty member, and as administrator, and there's no better example of what education is about or this college is about. And I'll just say that the most outstanding tribute is that while we will miss you, we will live on because of the foundation you built, so thank you. Okay, you made it. Faculty Association, Dr. Arjo.
Mr. Chairman, before you move on from the President's report, I want to make a comment, and maybe someone can explain a little bit more to me. On one of the links was the Kansas Court of Appeals oral arguments. Can someone, because I turned, I followed that link, and I was very interested. What exactly goes on? What, can anyone explain what's going on at the college there?
We have hosted on a number of occasions oral argument at the Kansas Court of Appeals, and on one occasion, the Kansas Supreme Court. Both those courts are now getting out and out of their courtrooms in Topeka and doing, holding oral arguments around the state, so that citizens, students can see what it means to be an appellate judge and hear appellate arguments, and I think, I think the Court of Appeals has probably been here every year at least once for the last. once, for the last several years.
For the last several, that actually is coordinated by Jay Nadelman, our faculty who is just stepping down as Chair of the paralegal program. He's staying here, he just wants to teach more and chair less. And so, it's an opportunity for our students, both those who are in paralegal, as well as business law and legal studies, to be able to see the court in action, understand kind of the actual roles and the real practice of the law, not just the theoretical pieces that they're getting to work at. And so, it's a great opportunity for our students to kind of see where they can end up at the end of the program in which they're engaged.
Where on campus exactly did this take place?
This took place, yeah.
This took place over in the Rainier Center, in Cap Fed. We can, you know, move the walls, make plenty of room.
And do they, how is the public informed of that? Is there a way that we, or is that mainly through the courts that they're?
It's been publicized, but I've heard it because you're oriented to the bar association. I don't know how much.
It's publicized, I think, in the local newspapers by the court itself. And then, we did, we info-listed it for a couple of weeks beforehand, so that students and other people in the community could know that we have this happening.
I enjoyed watching it, frankly.
Mr. Chair.
Trustee Cross?
I went to law school in Missouri, actually, and I know the Missouri Supreme Court had long done this. They, there's four law schools in Missouri. They would rotate between the law schools, and then as often as they can get out into the outstate or into the rural area. And it's just to generate public awareness. I guess I take for granted, we get bar notifications of it. On Vice President Korbe, very quick, if I may, just sparing myself to comment, I think the thing I treasure most about you is your ability to think outside the box, and it was the occasion of thinking about an oral argument, and hearing all sides, and thinking through something that I admired most about you. Also, teaching me the phrases, "Is this a hill you want to die on?" We've always done it, I don't know, we've always done it that way. And what I mean by that is shirking that concept and thinking outside the box, particularly over these last four years, that almost coincide identically for me and Dr. Sobchak, and the turmoil that we saw in this state, in this country, and in this county. Seeing all sides, your candor, there were tense moments, I would say, for, not necessarily me and you, but people around us. I admire your candor and the way that you handle things. And then, it was the event of thinking about an oral argument that I finally just wanted to speak out, so, thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right, Dr. Arjo, Faculty Association, no old business, no new business, so let's get to the philosophy business.
Okay, that's kind of hard to follow. So I'll just say very, once again, thank you, Judy. It's been a very pleasure and honor to work with you for the past year, and have the faculty. Thank you, and all the best. This summer, so, we have not been meeting. The FA officers will be meeting next week to start looking ahead to the upcoming year, which is going to be an eventful one. We have kind of a trifecta of board trustee elections, negotiations, and accreditation all coming together in one academic year, so I think that looks to be a rather interesting, promising year we're going to be heading into. As you might recall, I was in Europe for the last month, so I was not at the last meeting. Half of that was on college business, I was a part of an exchange, so I thought I might let you know just a little bit of what that was about, and some of the things I saw and learned pertaining to education in the Netherlands. So I was visiting a school system known as Nordusports. It kind of took the career side of JCCC and spread it out across the entire country, that's kind of how this works. So there's 19, I think, campuses, each one focusing on a particular career focus. So I visited one dedicated to nursing, basically, health and wellbeing, as they called it, entrepreneur's center, where they're teaching students how to be entrepreneurs, which was rather interesting. They get students busy right away, organizing actual business events, so they organize festivals. An American I was with, talking to some of the students, was very surprised, I think a little appalled, to find out that the students were organizing wine tasting trips to France, for both students and faculty to go on together. How could they do that in America? Visited a technology center, saw lots of interesting things, little robots, I got to try the Windows Hololens and see a virtual reality system, which they were using for medical diplomas. We looked at these things, and you see a big beating heart in front of you, that you could manipulate and have it beat in bad ways and help diagnose heart problems. The culinary program I visited in the Netherlands. So all very interesting, very practical, these schools, they really want to get students tied into internships right off the bat, so they're very oriented around that. As you might know, kind of typical in Europe, the students get sorted in high school as to which track they're going to go on. So these institutions I visited were strictly career. There was no transfer side whatsoever, that's really kind of uniquely American way to go about it. So I thought it was interesting. The worry in Europe, the European system is, you're going to sort of track students too quickly into a single line that they might turn out not to be very well suited for. Here, of course, we every try anything they're interested in, and the worry is, they might flounder about in economic careers or paths they're not really suited for, and end up wasting a lot of time. So they are quite interested to hear about our pathways program. We're trying to make students a bit more intentional in their academic decisions. They liked hearing about how we kind of navigate the openness we have. I was rather interested to hear about how they kind of confront the sort of narrowness of the schools that they have. Because the students start these programs when they're 16, and they finish when they're 20, and go into a job right off the bat. I did talk to a philosopher from the university, and it was very clear that she had very little knowledge and very little interest in this other educational track. So I do think that we have kind of a very nice system here, where we kind of bring these two worlds together in one place, and allow students to kind of go back and forth if they're so inclined, allow students who may be in a career track to also take classes in the liberal arts and get a bit more of a rounded education. So overall, it was quite interesting. I saw a lot of very nice things, they are very willing to pump money into these programs, a lot of very top technology, I saw. One more I'll mention, I talked at the foundation meeting the other night. One of those schools I went to was a maritime school, so they're teaching students how to work on ships. And they had a full-scale, life-size simulation of a bridge of a ship with all these monitors. They made it look like you were moving through the water, and we were pulling into Sydney Harbor, Australia, so you could see the famous opera house, and everything was quite dramatic and quite a shocking thing, impressive bit of technology. And we ran aground, so the students still had some work to do. We didn't quite make it to the harbor. We crashed. So in closing, it was a very nice experience, it's one of the wonderful things that this college does make available to people to take advantage of. I know how long this has been going on, quite a while, I know a number of people have done this Dutch exchange, and it was really quite, quite good. So, that's what I did myself so far.
How would the general requirements over there for, what we've talked about in collegial steering, about a liberal arts type, I mean, you know, history or philosophy, or, what do they get of that from age 16 to 20?
They would get, the ones that go into the career kind of education would get equivalent to what you would get in high school here. If you really want to get a college-level exposure to that, you have to go into the university track. So, and again, that gets decided when they're 16, based on their interest in performance. It is possible for them to jump tracks later, but it's not simply, "Oh, I think I'll go do this now." It's a bit more complicated, you have to take tests and show that you have the aptitude. Again, but I could tell, there was not a whole lot of communication between the university level and the career side of it. She could, "Oh, yeah, that's, I don't talk to those people, really." So it was very different in that respect. A lot of the things they're concerned with about education would sound very familiar, and they're very dependent on the state, so they're subject to the political vagaries and all of that kind of stuff. So a lot of it sounded very familiar. They're also struggling with what to do with what they call digital education, how to accommodate interest in online, and so on, so a lot of, "Oh, yeah, we talked about that, too."
Similar. Questions for Dr. Arjo? Well, enjoy your summer.
I will, I'll be around.
We'll see you next month, but thank you very much. Johnson County Education Research Triangle, Trustee Lindstrom.
Mr. Chairman, just a real brief report, sales taxes in Johnson County continues to trend positively. Last month, May, generated just about 1.49 million for the Johnson County Research, Education Research Triangle. For those people wanting more information about the triangle, go to joecontriangle.com. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Cook, Kansas Association of Community College Trustees.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On June 9 and 10, Friday, Saturday past, Dr. Sobchak, Trustee Sandate, and I attended the Kansas Association of Community College Trustee Meeting at Colby Community College, out in Colby, Kansas, five hours, 17 minutes, and 37 seconds from here. Interestingly, though, when people would say to Seth Carter, the president there, "Do you know how long it takes to get here?" He said, "Yes, because I go back east lots of times," so, everything is relative. But I'd like Trustee Sandate to comment. He attended the new trustee orientation, and it was, it was good to see you made it out and back again. You had a little side trip on the way, but what was your impression?
Well, I was, the impression was actually, I mean, eye-opening in the sense of, you know, our challenges are all varied, from college to college and community to community. And I think the one underlying tone, though, is just the sentiment is the commitment, though, to education, and making the college education experience available to those who, basically, for the most part, due to economics, cannot afford it or have access to go to a four-year institution. And so, I was very, very impressed with that. I mean, there's very, very sincere concerns, and just, I mean, the focus was definitely on how do they make higher education available to communities where they're just not really accessible any other way. So I was encouraged by that, but I was also just impressed with, once again, just the challenges, the very challenges, and I would even say that they're unique to every institution. And so, you know, affordability for the students and sustaining that, that affordability for the students was the driving focus, and just the sincerity and the commitment of all the trustees and the presidents, who care about that? So, very, very impressed with that, and by the same token, very, very appreciative of what we have to offer here. And I know that across the state, that we're very much admired and somewhat envied, but the reality is, is I think, as others have said and have spoken in our meeting here, that we really have a lot to offer, and as an institution, and we do a very, very excellent job at it, and by the same token, the commitment, everybody's aware of the commitment of our instructors and our leadership here in Johnson County, across the state of Kansas.
Thanks, Henry. I thank for the viewing public, just to review again, we have 19 community colleges, six technical colleges in Kansas. And what we try to emphasize when we go to KACCt is advancing the community college movement in the state of Kansas. I thank those of us that participate on the Association of Community College Trustees nationally, is we try to advocate for the community college movement nationwide. We have 1,108 community colleges in the United States, North America. And so, we, we try to advocate for the college at a national level, state level advocating at the state level. And Trustee Sandate really hit it on the head, and that is, how can we make community college accessible to all students across the state that have an interest to become something different than they are? And, and how can we then help that be affordable? So we'd like to thank community colleges that are accessible and affordable, and particularly, if someone is a first-generation student, which I was and am, gives people hope and an opportunity that they, they too can enhance their, their learning and their skill set to strengthen their communities. So, Friday afternoon, the new trustee orientation started in the morning, and, and so, the regular meeting with the Council of Presidents and the trustees started at 2 o'clock on Friday. Jackie Vietti has been hired by KACCt to advance our Kansas Community College Leadership Institute. And so, that afternoon, we had three presentations of students who have completed, we're in our second year of that program. And it's really been heartwarming to know that a number of people, and I didn't bring those exact numbers, but we had one or two that have advanced to the presidency of a college, we had four or five that have advanced to a vice president position, a number of people have gone through and become deans in their respective colleges. And the idea was that we would, we would help provide a program in Kansas to retain Kansas leaders for community colleges in Kansas. And every state, by the way, is challenged with finding leadership to lead their community colleges. Following that session, we then had a presentation by representatives from Kansas State University on their Global Pathways Program. If you're interested in knowing more about that, I have a packet on that, but our college staff, administration is very involved with, with that program. And that was very, very interesting. And when we had a legislative update, an evening of dinner, and then the next day, we had our joint, or our separate meetings with trustees, and then the presidents met, and then we come together and adjourned about, right before noon, and had our journey back to Johnson County. In our trustee meeting, and Trustee Sandate had upon this, you know, the commitment that the trustees have in their respective communities to, to improve the condition there is really heartfelt and sincere and should be applauded. And we oftentimes, when we go to a state meeting, think, "Well, how is this going to impact my college?" And so, on the one hand, we listen, and we're sensitive to those needs, and on the other hand, we try to focus on advancing the state, as I've said. But it's interesting that in our discussion in our trustee meeting, it came down to the same two initiatives that we have at ACCt. And we have a board retreat in July at ACCt, and we'll be adopting a new strategic plan that, that is focused around two, two goals, two key strategies. One is, we've all heard it so many times before, student success and degree completion. And the second one is, how can we help trustees become better trustees? So we have one on student success, and we have one on trustee development. And, and that was the same theme that we talked about at Colby. I think the trustees are very interested in, how can I become a better trustee to advance the college, become a better advocate, so that we can help students have a clear pathway to find, find their success in their mind? And those two goals are focused around six key values that we have at ACCt, and we challenge the members of KACCt. I've mentioned them to you before, and I think when we think about these things, how do we benchmark against them? The six values are boardsmanship, how do we become better boardsmen? Advocacy for our college, and it's just not in Washington DC or at the State House, but how can we become better advocates of our college every day, supporting the wonderful programs that take place? And every, one of the 19 colleges in Kansas have great programs taking place. Student success, student success, we just talk about that a lot. Innovation, diversity, and service are the six values. So this whole service to the community. And Karen, what a great testament tonight with the small business awards, and what we're doing in outreach to our community is, is an example of that service back to our community. So the reason I say that is, while we're trying to adopt a strategy at ACCt to help support state networks, the trustees in Colby, at least, were talking about those same two things. How can I become a better trustee, and how can we ensure student success? So, thanks, Henry, for attending. Dr. Sobchak, thanks for attending. We're pleased with what's happening with the Leadership Institute and developing people. And our next meeting is in September at Butler Community College, I believe, in Eldorado Springs. So, that concludes my report, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Trustee Cross?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Trustee Cook, I'm sorry I was not able to make it to Colby, I had committed to go, but had some family issues come up. What was the mood of the trustees and the overall gathering with respect to the end of the legislative session and, and recent events?
Well, the overall mood, I suppose, is, there's always the question about, how will the state funding impact their funding? How will the gun legislation impact their campus July 1st? We have three colleges that have had concealed carry the last four years, they did not take the exemption. So, so far, nothing significant, in terms of a crisis has happened on those campuses. So there was concern about that. I think there was a lot of discussion about the upcoming election, how will, you know, our boards be impacted by change? And so, just, just, I think the mood, though, is upbeat, and they're very confident that their community college is making a significant impact within their community. But it's not like Henry has said, that they're sincerely concerned about the sustainability of their college and the programs for their students.
Thank you. Thank you. Any comments or questions? Thank you, Jerry. Trustee Ingram, foundation report.
Absolutely. One of the other great things about Johnson County Community College is our foundation. On Tuesday, May 23rd, the foundation's annual luncheon was held in the collab on the first floor of the OCB. Nearly 100 attendees enjoyed the event, which featured a surprise guest in honor of outgoing foundation president Brad Bergman's service. It is well-known that Brad is a history enthusiast, so the foundation invited Candace Miller, a three-time New York Times bestselling author of historical biographies and Johnson County Community College alumna, to the luncheon to speak, mingle, and of course, sign books. All guests at the luncheon received a copy of Candace's latest, excuse me, bestseller, Hero of the Empire, about Winston Churchill. To open the luncheon, President Sobchak announced the foundation member Hugh Libby will donate $2 million to our upcoming 50th anniversary capital campaign. I would like to thank Hugh for this generous gift and fellow trustee Jerry Cook for supporting Hugh and the foundation through this process. Finally, we're pleased to share that the 2017 Johnson County of the Year will be Mark Gilman. Mark is the chairman of the board of Gil Studios in Lenexa and is a longtime supporter of the Performing Arts and Community Health Initiatives on both the local and state level. We're excited to recognize Mark at our Sum Enchanted Evening Scholarship Gala on November the 11th. Sponsorship solicitations have been mailed under the leadership of John Stewart, who is serving as our sponsorship chairman. Clint and Britton Robinson are serving as the 2017 co-chairs of the gala, and that is my report.
Thank you. Thank you, Nancy. Any questions about the foundation? If not, we're ready for our consent agenda.
Mr. Chair, excuse me.
I'm sorry, Dr. Cook?
There was a great acknowledgement of someone's birthday and that got left out.
Yeah, there was a bad singing example of happy birthday on that May 23rd date, but it was greatly appreciated because the effort was there. It was a sincere effort by everybody. Thank you, Jerry, for bringing that up. We're ready for the consent agenda. The consent agenda is a list of items that are routine and consensus items that have been, that are typically considered collectively and approved in a single motion and vote. Any member of the board may request that a particular item be removed from the consent agenda and considered and debated separately. Are there any items that anybody wants to discuss or comment on or removed from the consent agenda to be considered separately? If there are none, I'd accept a motion to approve the consent agenda as printed.
So moved, seconded.
Moved and seconded, all in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Before we get into the, we're gonna have an executive session, I want to welcome Dr. Singh to the, your first board meeting. How many years later, Judy, will we get to say goodbye to him?
35.
35 years from now, we'll say goodbye to you. We are going, I am gonna ask for a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of, purpose of discussing personnel matters of non-elected personnel in order to protect the privacy interests of the individuals to be discussed. The session is scheduled to last 60 minutes. No action will be taken during this session. Why don't we start at, do we need a break? Start at 6:40?
Yeah.
Start at 6:40, we'll reconvene in this room no later than 7:40. We'd like to invite Dr. Sobchak and Tanya Wilson, our general counsel, to join in the executive session. Do I hear such a motion?
So moved.
Seconded. Moved by Trustee Lindstrom and seconded by Trustee Sandate. All in favor, all, is there a discussion? Not all in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no. Motion carried. We'll adjourn into executive session at 6:40 and be back here no later than 7:40. No action will be taken.
Correction, someone will be saying goodbye in 35 years. It won't be, I don't think.
I'm saying Dr. Singh will.
Oh, I know. You said we'll be saying.
Oh, okay. We're reconvening in open session. It is 6:40, excuse me, it is 7:40 PM. We've been in executive session for one hour. No decisions have been made. We're gonna need some extra time, so I would entertain a motion to extend our executive session by 30 minutes for a purpose of discussing personnel matters of non-elected personnel in order to protect the privacy interests of the individuals to be discussed. This session will last no more than 30 minutes. We will reconvene in this room no later than 8:10 PM. Again, invite Dr. Sobchak and Tanya Wilson to join the, join the session. Do I have such a motion?
So moved.
Seconded. Moved and seconded, all in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no. Motion carried. We'll go back into executive session and reconvene no later than 8:10. Thank you. We're back from executive session at 8:10 PM or 8:09. I'm gonna ask for a motion for another 15 minutes to proceed into executive session to discuss personnel matters of non-elected personnel in order to protect the privacy interests of the individuals to be discussed. Like to, this will last no more than 15 minutes, and so, we will intend to be back in this room at 8:25. Like to invite Dr. Sobchak and Tanya Wilson to join this session as well. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Seconded.
Ingram, seconded, who moved it?
Jerry.
Jerry, Dr. Cook again, okay. All right, all in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no. Motion carried. Thank you. We'll be back here no later than 8:25. We are now reconvened in open session. It is 8:20 PM. We did not take the entire 15 minutes of the third extension of our executive session. Do I hear a motion?
I will move that we enter into a contractual agreement with Dr. Sobchak for a rolling four-year period.
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Not all in favor, say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, no. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
So moved.
Moved and seconded, all in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no. Motion carried. We adjourn.
See ya.